Okay, now that we're all here, call the meeting order. It's May 17th and it's seven o'clock. Can I have acceptance of the agenda? This is an amended agenda. Everyone should have the one with 7A on it.
Move to accept the amended agenda.
Second.
Move by Mr. Danny, second by Mr. Norton. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? It's unanimous? Okay, we'll move on to number two. Excuse me, number three. Wait a minute. Number two, right. Accept and a walk-in period. Are there any walk-ins here? Okay, I don't see any. So we'll skip right on to number three. Discussion vote of the new manager at Situate Harbor Yacht Club. Mr. Colfoys?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is a just a brief procedural matter. We have a new manager at the Situate Harbor Yacht Club. Timothy Feeney will be here today. He has great management experience. We're excited about him being our manager down there. And I believe as part of our liquor license responsibility, we have to advise you of that and just have the procedural change with respect to it. And that's why we're here tonight.
Great. Motion? Any questions?
Motion, Mr. Chairman? Move to the Board of Selectmen vote to grant the request for a change in manager for the Situate Harbor Yacht Club to Timothy Feeney.
Second. Move by Mr. Norton, second by Mr. Danny. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? It's unanimous. Mr. Feeney, we'll see you down there. All right. Cruising right along. We'll go on to number four, which is the discussion vote for reconsideration of sewer betterment deferral 11-1, which we discussed at the previous meeting. A quick overview, it became apparent, and Trish, correct me if I'm wrong, that we gave the deferral on the sewer betterment, which really was not legal for us to do because of the state mandate that says that they have to be accepted under Chapter 13B? No, 41A of Chapter 59. So, and that was not the case. So before you can get a deferral for a betterment, you first have to pass an income level, which this applicant did not pass.
Move to reconsider?
I'll second that. So move by Mr. Norton, second by Mr. Danny. Any further discussion on it? Tricia, anything we left out?
No, so you're going to reconsider and then vote to deny?
So this is to reconsider the last meeting's, I don't remember the number of deferral that we passed. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I abstain, Mr. Chair, because I was not at that meeting, so I should not participate in this vote. I can participate in the next vote.
So that's a four-nothing passing of the reconsideration. So now we'll go on to discuss it, the deferral of the applicant that is before us. Mr. Norton?
I'll make a motion for the discussion. Move the Board of Selectmen vote to deny sewer betterment deferral 11-1 per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 83, which was accepted at a town meeting.
I'll second it.
And I do that because, for the reasons you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, we tried to do the right thing, but legally, obviously, we can't, so.
That's moved by Mr. Norton, second by Mr. Harris. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Maybe this is to Steve, and I didn't have a chance to look this up. Under Chapter 59, 41A, there is a list of exemptions. That wasn't provided to us in our packet, so I was trying to figure out, are there any other exemptions? I know that it was, it seems to me like the policy for the basis is due to what we've promulgated as, at the assessors' level. Is that the, in order to qualify, there's a, there's a...
Right, you have to grant the...
Okay. Those income guidelines, where do they originate from? From the state or from the town? Okay. So in other words, because they didn't hit the income maximum or minimum, I guess, requirement, they exceeded it. Legally, they're not entitled to it, which is the reason why this board needs to go back and say, okay, we sent you, you're over the limit, you don't qualify, therefore, we as a board were in error by granting that deferral. All right. I just wanted to make sure, because I didn't have that chapter and I didn't have a chance to look it up, and providing there's no other remedy. I do have one other question, Steve. Would they be able then to, or could they have gone under a financial hardship requirement under, I say clause 18, 18A, I saw that there, but that's the discretion of the Board of Assessors.
The discretion of the Board of Assessors. There aren't any income guidelines for that.
So would they then have to reapply, or can they amend there for the assessors to review it in that category?
They might have to file it.
Okay. So in order for them to have done that, they would have had to have filed both for that section as well as this section? Okay. Thank you.
They could reapply next year if their situation so changes.
The finance, the income threshold.
Because I'm assuming the only reason why they're over by like a few thousand dollars, based on the category they selected.
Well, for deferral, yes.
Yeah, right.
Without getting into specifics.
No, I'm not going to get into specifics. I'm just only saying, because of, they had been granted it, they attempted to, the reason why I looked at it was this, they attempted to try to better themselves, but in the process, by doing that, because they were over by a few thousand dollars, it actually cut against them, whereas the incentive to try to better themselves is going to be less, because they could go and say, guess what, we're not going to rent out this section, puts them in that category.
All the statements in the file, they're all sorts of...
Yeah. That's all. I just wanted to kind of get some clarification. I appreciate that. Thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Murray, did you have a question?
I'm all set.
Anyone else?
All set.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? So it's unanimous, five to nothing. So we'll move on to item number five, which is the acceptance of a gift.
Motion.
Mr. Chair, we have a letter here, which I'd just like to read as the clerk associated with this motion. It's from Jennifer Vitelli, who's the Director of Recreation, says, "Dear Mr. Danny, as Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, I respectfully request the Board of Selectmen to accept the generous donation of a 13-foot powerboat from the Friends of Situate Recreation. This boat will serve as one of our chase boats for the summer sailing program. The Friends of Situate Recreation via the PJ Steverman Golf Classic have been a tremendous friend to our town, donating nearly $300,000 back to our community. Sincerely, Jennifer Vitelli." And if I may continue with a motion.
Sure.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the gift of a 13-foot powerboat from the Friends of Situate Recreation on behalf of the Town of Situate and the Recreation Department.
Second motion?
Second.
Mr. Murray? Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. It's very generous of the Steverman family, once again.
Tony, I just want to say the board's going to be seeing more of these. We just had a discussion of this in the staff meeting, where there are donations or gifts or equipment or things regularly made to departments. The board actually is the one that approves those before they're accepted. They don't come as a thank you after the fact. I mean, we need to ensure this vote, we need to make a determination if it's a gift we want. Sometimes the planning board negotiates land as part of approvals. Those all need to come to the board as the chief executive officers to approve before they can individually be accepted by any board or committee. So you'll tend to be seeing more of these lately, and I spoke with it, about it at length at the last staff meeting, so.
Good. Great. And good to give recognition.
Mr. Chair, may I have a quick follow-up on that?
Yes, Mr. Murray.
You referred to land to the planning board as part of discussions of projects?
Sometimes it's when there's a subdivision review, it's a donation of land.
Understood.
That's something that this board needs to...
Before the planning board issues?
And I clarify that with law.
Great.
And can we like...
Just like CPC.
Understood.
The board overall should have a sense of what the town is acquiring, and should have your blessing.
In those situations, is the board constrained to only approve that which was offered, or can the board counter and say, okay, this is what we'd like to see?
In this particular case, you would go back to the planning board and have that conversation. But what's happening now is you're finding out after the fact, and I'm just trying to flip that and have the conversation beforehand, because at the end of the day, only this board can accept gifts, only this board can accept land. And again, if someone wants to donate something, that's wonderful, but again, it might not be something that we want.
Right. Good point. Great. So let's move on to item number six, which is a vote on Hawker Peddler's license renewal for Zack's Ice Cream. Is anyone here from Zack's Ice Cream? No. So we have to decide whether we want to go ahead and move it, or if we want to ask him to come up and attend the meeting. Yes, Mr. Harris?
Normally, I would say, you know, I think it's important enough that they come in, but reading the backup here, he's been in business for six years in this town, it's a renewal.
It's renewal, yeah.
Haven't really, haven't had any complaints about him, obviously followed the guidelines.
We've been holding on to this one for a little bit, which is why I had...
I don't have a problem voting it, that's just my opinion.
Mr. Norton?
I agree. We're, we're, it's a renewal. I mean, he's been here five years in a row, but why...
Mr. Danny?
Just the only thing I'd suggest is, I think we did it with him, and I think we do it with certainly the ice cream vendors, is to give him the policy, I forgot which one it is, 94-96- whatever, about the policy that they can't sell within so many feet of a store, so that he's aware of it, or at least he's been put on notice again, that's all. Whenever we send it to him, just so he has that notice.
I think it's important if they, for once a year, for them to show, I mean, not on this case, but I think in the future, it's, it's good to see the person that's...
Even a renewal?
Yeah, I mean, it's one time to get, you want to get a license to do business in our town, come in.
I don't think there's too much to ask.
I don't, I mean, I don't think we're going to set that precedent now, but, but like John said, when something comes up and there's been an enforcement of something or a change in something, we want to make sure that we don't have someone coming back later saying, oh, I didn't know that.
Or you could suggest every other year, you know, I mean, say, okay, this year it's routine, next year, you know what, I'd like to see your face and kind of come in and talk to the board, even if it's for five minutes or something.
I like that idea. Okay, so, so on this item. Motion? Motion? Thank you.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the Hawker Peddler's license for the ice cream vendor's license for Ahmad Alakataba doing business at Zack's Ice Cream for 2011. This license is subject to positive inspection by the Board of Health.
Second. Second. Motion by Mr. Danny, second by Mr. Murray. Further discussion? Seeing none, just one quick note. Kim was nice enough to put in here that says that we currently only have one ice cream vendor licensed, so this would be two. So the town is not inundated with, with ice cream trucks driving around to all our beaches and baseball fields and stuff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? It is unanimously five-zero. Moving on to number seven. This is a public hearing that was scheduled for 7:30 for the Hummer Rock Tavern LLC, and I have received a fax asking that they withdraw this application at this time, and they would like to request that we draw and accept it or without prejudice. So, do we have to actually make a motion for the withdrawal, or do we just take it off? So why don't we, do I have a motion to accept the withdrawal?
Move to accept, or motion to accept withdrawal of the applicant for their liquor license for Hummer Rock Tavern LLC.
Second. Mr. Danny, second by Mr. Murray. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? It is unanimous at five-zero. Now we'll move on to the amended item, which is item 7A, a discussion vote for a one-day liquor license at the Situate Marine Center. This is for an event for the 375th anniversary. Yes, Mr. Norton?
If you'd like a motion, Chairman?
Yes.
If I could find the, move to allow one-day liquor license for the Situate 375th Committee at the Maritime Center on...
June 1st?
June 1st.
Second.
From...
Five to seven.
Five thirty to seven thirty.
Five thirty to seven thirty.
Sogging.
And to waive the fee? If I could be so bold to suggest, to waive the fee in that motion.
Second.
Second by...
Just kind of give it up.
So we've got a motion. Did you get the motion, the combined motion, by Mr. Norton, Mr. Danny, and then seconded by Mr. Harris?
Mr. Chairman, before we vote on that, can I just, while I thought of that this afternoon, I may not think of it again, the next celebration, we're the 400th, Tricia, and I wonder if you could just make a note to put at the next annual town meeting, I guess, an article to, to put aside $5,000 or $10,000, or whatever, for that 400th celebration, so that the people who are sitting here at that time...
You'll be here.
No, I won't. If I am, it'll be a celebration, I mean. You know, I want to have to look for $25,000.
You wrote some money for the side for the 400. I have no idea how much. I just happened to be in the clerk's office today, and she mentioned there was a, an account for the 400.
If you can just state your name?
Matthew Brown.
Matthew Brown, and Mr. Brown, if, maybe you'd just like to say a little bit about this event on the 1st, so people watching can hear.
Okay. Who hasn't heard my story?
Tony.
Do you want to give it a whole routine?
No, no, just the cliff nose version, and maybe you can sit up here.
Okay, I've told the story to most everybody in town, but I'll tell it quickly again. On June 1st, 1813, the...
Excuse me, you're not going to go from there to here.
Yeah, I was going to say.
October 2nd, 1814.
On June 1st, 1813, the USS Chesapeake was blockaded in Boston Harbor by the HMS Shannon. And people around the Commonwealth were getting upset that the Chesapeake wouldn't go out, they'd paid good taxpayers' money for it, they'd just appointed a brand-new 28-year-old captain, and they've recruited a brand-new crew. Well, the captain was smart, because the Shannon was an experienced British frigate and was dangerous. But the criticism got to him, and on June 1st, he left Boston Harbor, and as he passed Boston Light, people all over the coastline recognized that the Chesapeake was out and people gathered by the seashore. He sailed 18 miles due east, and there he met the Shannon, and with 15 minutes, in 15 minutes, the battle was over. 61 Americans lied dead, and the brand-new captain was carried below with mortal wounds, and the last words he said was, "Tell the men to fire faster and don't give up the ship. Fight her till she sinks." Well, the British took over the ship, sailed it to Halifax, and it was a dock day for the United States Navy. But three months later, on Lake Erie, a good friend of Commander Lawrence, Commodore Oliver Hazard Perry, changed the name of his flagship to the USS Lawrence. He had a flag made that said, "Don't give up the ship," and flew it from the taffrail of his ship and attacked the British. And this time, the results were different. He reported to his commander, "We have met the enemy and they are ours." And they drove the British from the United States and set up a favorable decision on the War of 1812, and never again has the American Navy been threatened by any navy. And that, those words, "Don't give up the ship," were adopted by the motto, as the motto of the United States Navy. And that battle, in which those words were said, happened 11 miles from Situate. And it could have been seen from Second Cliff, it could have been seen from where the lighthouse is today, and not too many people know about that. So I want to celebrate that. A lot of us want to celebrate that in, in conjunction with the 375th. On the 199th year of that battle, we're going to have a reception over the Maritime Park, and we're going to award 15 flags, replicas of the Perry flag, to people who have public flagpoles, and we're going to ask them to fly that flag. And we're going to ask people to remember that Situate was the birthplace of the motto of the United States Navy, and I would like that to continue throughout the years. So we have another story about the War of 1812, other than the story of Rebecca and Abigail, now we have a story of brave men dying off the shores of Situate. So that's what that is all about. And it would be nice to have some finger food and something to drink at, at this reception. We plan to have the captain of the Constitution come down with a color guard and award these flags, and unfortunately, I'm going to have to tell this story again, but you will have all heard it. And so I want everybody in town to know that story, so they would be able to repeat it.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. So it's open to the public?
No. It's invitation-only.
Invitation-only?
Yeah.
And it's at the Maritime Center, and it's at 5:30 on June 1st?
Yes, I'd love to have it be open to the public, but as you know, the Maritime Center is small.
Right.
So, and I wanted to make sure that the people that had flagpoles came, and that everybody else that could tell the story came, so that's why we made it.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Now, one quick question on that, is that, actually, never mind.
Go ahead.
No, no. I'll see you there.
Okay.
Actually, I've got a few.
Friday, June 1st?
It's Wednesday. It's Wednesday, June 1st.
Wednesday, thank you.
Wednesday, June 1st.
Thank you.
Are all the invitations out there, or are they still selling?
I've sent out all the invitations. One of the members of the committee said that there are other people that ought to be invited. I should get their names and addresses, and I'll send out more. I think that, I think we'll be cozy over there, if everybody that's been invited shows up, but many people maybe can't. It's a strange day, it's the middle of the week.
I'm sure the weather will be fantastic, so we can use the deck.
Well, if it's anything like today, it'll be just the six of us.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt. Did we end up voting on that, Sheila?
We did.
Right. So we'll move on to number eight. Let me find it in my book. And this is an update on the Hawker Peddler's Farmers Markets licensing. Tricia, do you want to update us, or do you want me to?
Whatever you want to do.
Go ahead. Why don't you?
At the board's last meeting, we had a rather extended discussion about hawkers and peddlers licenses, not only for hawkers and peddlers traveling throughout town or being in specific locations, but also as they relate to the farmer's market. So although I never do this, in this particular case, I would like to read the memo verbatim, it's about a page, just so we capture everything and then open up to the board. As, you know, you charged Kim and I at the last meeting to come up with some additional research and findings around that. So we researched over two dozen communities for their policies, bylaws, and practices relative to the issuance of hawkers, peddlers license, and the oversight and permitting of farmers markets. This memorandum serves as an interim update as our research continues relative to hawkers, peddlers, and we will have these anticipated at the June 7th meeting. However, because there are pending issues with farmer's market applications, our findings are provided by, provided below. Number one, the issuance of hawkers, peddlers licenses for each market vendor are not applicable nor warranted. All, all market issues are decided by the market manager and/or governing board as to what qualifies as eligible market products and who may participate. Our research also indicated that all vendors are required to carry evidence of liability insurance. In general, farmers markets may not sell wholesale or retail products, but provide farm-grown or home-crafted products or value-added products. But again, this is not a town or Board of Selectmen issue. Number three, the board must vote to approve the use of town land for the market. The board may also limit the number of vendors it believes can safely operate in the approved area. The board can delineate where vendors can set up, the board can limit the timeframe from the operation in terms of month and times. The board can direct that all participants must have evidence of liability insurance. The original issuance of the hawkers, peddlers license by the board was the town's good intent to ensure there was some oversight and approval for vendors. However, this was not an appropriate or legitimate use of the hawkers, vendors, hawkers, peddlers license. The market manager is the person that must be responsible for these items. The town has been serving that role, and it is not appropriate. However, given that we are already into the season for the market, our recommendations for how the board should proceed in the immediate short term and for the future are as follows. Number one, that the market continue this year and that no further action be taken on licenses already issued. However, no further licenses will be issued, as they are not required or appropriate, and that the market manager may not approve any additional licenses, and I'll get into that in a bit. The market manager should ensure that retail products being sold, or any products not handcrafted or farm-grown, are charging sales tax. Number three, that the board determine after review currently being conducted by the safety officer, the maximum number of vendors allowed in the town-owned parking lot. The board issued 12 licenses last year. We already have issued 23 this year, and I'm concerned about safety. I've been to the market on a number of occasions last year with the 12, and Officer Thompson has already been in touch with some of the market folks to do just that. The average space used by a vendor is a 10-by-10 tent. One produce vendor needs more, but he's delineating that now, so you know what the maximum number should be. Number four, and the final one, is that all responsibility, management, and oversight of the market is directly that of the market manager and/or governing board, and that the market manager should report to the board next year with a comprehensive set of guidelines and rules for operation before use of the parking lot will be approved.
Thank you.
Now, just to follow up relative to the traveling hawkers, peddlers, what we're doing now and why we don't know for sure whether we'll have anything for June 7th, is the safety officer is doing research throughout the town as to places where they're just going to be outright prohibited due to safety or intersections, and also appropriate distances from existing businesses or concessions. Because if you just said, you know, you can do ice cream, but it has to be 500 feet from any business or concession, we want to make sure that that 500 feet isn't in the ocean or in the middle of an intersection. We just don't want to pick an arbitrary number, we want to make sure it's something that's actually, you know, that the vendor's able to comply with. So I'm happy to answer any additional questions, and as I said, Kim and I work very closely on this together.
Thank you for doing it so quickly. Just one quick question before I pass it over. Is the, the information that you gave, is any of this law, or is it just what you found, the 12 communities that you talked to, what they're doing?
We did about 20, I did about 30 communities.
Right.
I also founded the farmer's market in Conway eight years ago, which I don't do anymore because I'm here. But, so basically, what we did is we looked at all the guidelines, the operations, the town website in terms of permits, border health permits, police permits, and how they relate to hawkers, peddlers, and that's how we backed into this.
Mr. Murray?
Yeah, I have a series of sort of small questions that don't need a huge answer, but just as you were going through and as I was reading earlier. All vendors required to carry evidence of liability insurance under number two, and then under number three, board can direct, all participants must have evidence of liability insurance. Who checks? You, us, or the manager?
The manager.
Okay.
In some towns, one or two that I saw, the liability insurance was waived...
Yep.
For certain vendors, not all vendors, but again, if the board wants to make that a requirement as for use of our parking lot, that's something in your purview.
Okay. Can this board set guidelines as to the balance of, and I'm just using broad terms here, I'm not intending to be pejorative, about a farmer's market versus a flea market type things? I know there's overlap and it's somewhat subjective, but can we give guidelines as to the sorts of things that we would like to see at this, or do we turn over all control, if you will, as to the content of what is sold there?
That would be my recommendation, that it's really with the governing board to determine what's sold at the market.
This governing board?
No, not this governing board, the...
Their governing board, okay.
Or the market manager.
The market manager.
And I didn't have a chance, I don't know if Kim wasn't able to give you a copy of this, was she, Ann Hill? Right, so I apologize that you're just hearing it for the first time. She's on vacation, but... Yeah. And we have, and I have copies of all the stuff we downloaded from the various towns. Kingham has the second oldest farmer's market in the state. So, um, they've really had lots of years to perfect it. But we have a packet of all that stuff from everything we downloaded to give to you. So you can look at different applications. Some, some, um, things at the market are juried, that there's a board and you're actually deciding the crafts that go there. So we'll, I can give you all that tomorrow if you stop by.
And I, just a few more, two more quick questions. Says the board must vote to approve use of town land for the market. Have we done that already?
Yeah, I think you do that in the beginning of the year, she...
Okay.
To kind of use the law, yeah.
And then also, the market manager, do we need to formally appoint anybody? Or we, have we de facto done that already or we're all set with that?
This is really something that we've been immersed in way more than we needed to, just again, through good intent.
Sure.
Really, you're only giving approval of the law. And then all these other things are determined by the folks who really want to do all the, the work to run it.
Right, and, and given the good success that we've had and the fact it's been led
Yeah.
very well and so on, we clearly have a market manager. But I'm just thinking, in the future, if someone wants to set up something, would we need to approve that person formally?
No.
Not as an appointment, but just... Do we have to say, okay, you're okay being the market manager?
I would say that is not in your purview. You're just approving the use of town land.
Okay, so then anybody...
If there's another Ann Hill someday and there's competing people, then you could decide.
Well, that's what I'm kind of wondering.
Which of the two, but, um, right.
Could someone come in, and I'm just, I'm speaking out of concern slash protection for all the, I mean, you've started this and invested a lot of heart and soul into it. Could someone else come there at the same time? Because that's where we've decided there's going to be a farmer's market at such and such a time. Can someone come in there at the same time and say, wait a minute, I'm the market manager, it's not her. Uh, we're just going to set this up and over here is going to be ours and over there is going to be yours.
Because what you'll do next year is approve use of the town land for this organization.
Okay, so that, that achieves the, essentially the anointing of the market manager.
Yeah.
Perfect, great, that covers you. Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Harris?
Would we be covered if a vendor does not have insurance? Was the town covered? And I don't, I'd hate to see all these vendors have to get liability insurance. But we as a town would be covered, correct?
The town has insurance.
Right.
That's correct. But again, you're permitting a use that's not a general town use there. And one of the things that we did find is that liability insurance was covered. And a lot of folks are going to have that already.
Right.
There'll be one or two instances where it might be a hardship, but again, that's for that group to decide if they want to have a waiver policy and what would constitute that.
Okay, so they decide the little boy selling crayons, or it doesn't have to have an insurance policy.
They can decide that.
Okay.
Right.
And then, you know, would the town be covered if someone was hurt or what?
I guess there's no other way to say this, is regardless of whether the town is liable or not, we will get sued because we have pockets.
Makes sense.
So regardless, but this is again, you know, how you have folks, um, we always like special events. The town is named as an additional insured because they're using town... It's along the same line.
Okay. Any further questions? Um, I had just a couple. Obviously, we have to generate these guidelines. Right now, there's nothing in place and this is kind of your outline of the direction we should move in.
Just the ones where I say for next year, approval of town land and if you want to limit the number of vendors and where they can, the area where they can set up.
Now, um, revenues, does the town lease out the land? How, how does that work? Does the town make any money? I, I mean, obviously, some group will come to us and they'll say, we want to use the parking lot here on Wednesdays from four to seven. And we'll say, under these guidelines, twenty vendors can fit in that space and, and this is the hours of operation and so forth. Is there some sort of arrangement, financial arrangement or no?
No, I, no, I don't think that, I mean, this is a wonderful thing for the community, so we don't want to charge you. I mean, you have been charging for the hawkers, peddlers license.
Right.
So the town has been getting a fee for that.
Right.
But also, the hawkers, peddlers license is good for a whole year. And the window for the market is like ten or twelve weeks, I forget, maybe a little longer. But no, the board should not be charging a fee for the...
Okay, and there's no farmer's market license?
No.
That we, that would be generated?
No, which is how we got to where we are in the first place, because we were trying to, you know, whenever you got the first one three years ago, whatever, this is what we thought was close to sort of say, yes, you have the town's blessing.
So at some point over the next several months, we'll finalize these guidelines, discuss them and vote on them?
Yeah, so in advance of the market for next year. But, um, Officer Thompson will have the optimum number. If he comes back and says you safely can have thirty there, then, you know, by all means, you can do that. But I'm, I'm thinking just from having been at the market last year, that we have twenty some for now. I think you're going to be pretty close, but he's doing that right now. So with Bridget or, I can't reme, yeah, okay.
Do you know when he'll have the, those results or...
Well, he's working on it, it's only been a week, so.
Okay.
Any, any thought on the board in terms of, uh, obviously, we can maintain some sort of control over the products that go in there? Or do you want to, that'd be a discussion point, do we want to turn that over to an entity to do that? And discuss what sort of, you know, if all of a sudden products are being sold that we don't want to be sold in a farmer's market, how, what would the recourse be for that? Would all be points of discussion?
The only thing that jumped into my, if I may, Mr. Chairman, is that, I think we're setting up, and I, I don't know how to get around this, but we're allowing people to sell in competition in North Situate, with the business in North Situate, okay? And use, uh, and use ice cream, for example, okay? If someone was to come to the farmer's market and put up a slush machine and sell, whatever. They would be allowed to do that in North Situate, even though there's an ice cream store five hundred feet away. They would not be allowed to do that in the harbor. Because of our policy saying, you have to stay so far away from a, an ice cream store. You should get, uh, with someone down the dribbles or whatever the one down the harbor. So we have two kind of sets of rules here. And I, I just wonder how we can, how we can make that, uh, fair. I mean, if, if, if people agree with me that we do have two, two sets of rules.
But I guess what we can do is figure out, you know, this is just what other communities do. We, if we wanted to go off the board and, and kind of create our own, using pieces of others.
And maybe it wasn't clear, the board is not getting involved in any of the products sold in the market going forward. And those products for it to be a farmer's market have to be farm grown or home grown. So, and in the case of the ice cream, that person has to have a hawkers, peddlers license anyway because of the refrigeration and stuff like that. And then the five hundred foot rule or whatever. But the, what the purpose of this is basically said is, you're, you're having a divorce right now. And you are not going to see the other party again. And you're only going to permit the use of the land.
I think that, for my concerns, if that's the right word, the fact that it would have to be, uh, farm grown or home grown, homemade, that may be one of our stipulations.
Mike, can I just make sure I understood what you said? If it were, or there could be items in there that would be subject to a hawkers, peddlers, just to pick up on Joe's example of an ice cream thing. If it were home grown, if it were, if it were home grown ice cream, if there is such a thing, but you know what I mean? Then that would be subject to a hawkers, peddlers license.
Right.
So we would have that control.
Then the group would accept that.
But again, ice cream is not a farmer's market.
Right, I don't...
Gotcha, okay.
So and I, I think that's really where, so it was an opportunity for anybody to come and sell stuff and it really has to go back to what is a farmer's market? It's an opportunity to get fresh product, produce or help local businesses that don't have retail settings. And then there's value added products, which is, I grow tomatoes and I make salsa from that and I want to sell salsa. Or I grow herbs and I make pesto and I want to sell pesto. Those are permitted things. But some of the ones that are licensed, you're permitted now, would not qualify a year from now. But we're not penalizing people.
Right.
This year, we're just saying it's a new day next year. We're just not going to approve anymore and also because with two dozen already, you're at your optimum number.
I guess my question is, I, I'm a little confused, is this what you're suggesting or is what it has to be?
Has to be.
I have recommended to you, Kim and I have recommended you how to proceed after thirty some communities in Massachusetts.
For a farmer's market?
For a farmer's market. And what is the guidelines and the policies are after reviewing all those and how they operate.
Right, so, and then we will come up with whatever parts of those guidelines we want or don't want is, would be our options.
That's in the board's discretion, but...
So, but the outcome, one second. The outcome would be, as the farmer market is currently constituted, a fairly large amount of those vendors would not be able to participate in the farmer's market, possibly.
Correct, on the go forward.
Somewhat.
Not a fair number, but...
Well, some of them, you know, jewelry or, um, you know, some of those things wouldn't fall.
But again, if jewelry is being done at the home.
Oh, homemade, right, right, right.
And that's, you know, so what they would do is if they have seven people who want to sell jury, I mean jewelry, they would be able to decide if it's different enough or the same enough or if they're a situate vendor as opposed to a Melrose vendor.
Right.
Those were what all the governing board would determine all those.
Currently, we have two vendors that would not meet the criteria.
Yeah.
We have a franchisee and, um, a merchant that has space already that will be, I guess, retail. So two out of the twenty-five would not meet the criteria as described by...
But we're not going to, we're not going to retro on them now.
Right.
For twenty-eleven, this would only be up for twenty-twelve.
Then it's good, then it's up to them.
Right, uh, once, Ms. Burmind?
Anne Burmind, Tenpenny Chris Road. Um, I'm a merchant in North Situate. I'm also involved with North Situate merchants. And I have to tell you that the association welcomes the marketplace. And as a matter of fact, we are working diligently to try to have what may or may not call Wacky Wednesdays so that we, the merchants in North Situate, in conjunction with the farmer's market, would in fact be open until seven o'clock at night to encourage people to utilize the village, to walk around to different merchants, et cetera. We don't view it as competition. We view it as an enhancement to North Situate. And it, I would, going along with what the town administrator has said, and I couldn't agree with her more, this is really, when you talk about hawkers, peddlers and not being able to sell ice cream in the harbor, that's, that's a truck, that's something different. It's, we sell ice cream, because I'm involved with Heritage Days, we sell slush and what have you. That's indirect competition, but it's one, it's one weekend, um, fifty-two. In North Situate, it's one afternoon, twelve times in the summer. It's, it's going to enhance us, it's not going to hurt us. The more, the merrier.
Thank you. Yeah, it's good to hear that there's a cooperation between...
Yeah, I don't think, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I don't think there was any intent not to, I mean, you know, not to stop it, we encourage it.
It's more, I understand, but competition is not necessarily a bad thing. Competition, it just makes all of us work harder, work better, work smarter. And so we're trying to, we're going to have a cocktail reception, which most likely you will get an invitation to.
Most likely?
On Wednesday, Wednesday, on Wednesday, the eighth of June. And we invite farmer's market people if they would like to come. Hopefully bring a taste of what they may or may not have to offer. And we're inviting the merchants in North Situate, we're inviting the merchants in the harbor, we're inviting merchants of coal acid. We are a community and we need all to work together to try to build it, all of us. It's a plus, it's a win-win situation.
Thank you. But you don't sell ice cream, so we've got to figure out how the ice cream people feel. So, back to Mr. Murray for a second.
Uh, just so I make sure I understand what's going on here. So for the long term, that is for twenty-twelve, there may or may not be additional discussions on some of the things you're talking about. But for the short term, do you need us to formally agree to the memo of May thirteenth?
No.
Because you have, because you have, on page two, these four recommendations. Your recommendations to how the board should proceed in the immediate short term and for the future are as follows. You've got four things there. What do you, what do you need from us?
So there's one thing, you're not going to approve any more hawkers and peddlers.
Until we get the safety report.
You want to communicate to the market manager that you don't think they should be approving any more vendors because you might be at your maximum now in terms of whatever Officer Thompson comes up. And then like next year, you'll adopt these guidelines for going forward. But everybody's held harmless this year because the market's about to start.
So you just need a sense of the board as to this memo?
I think it is what it is. It's, I mean, it exists, it exists the way.
We could, in theory, we could say, thank you very much for your hard work, we don't want to do any of these.
Right.
Good.
So I mean, I think it's, I do just think it's important that there be some...
Right, but if we accept these now, I think
Correct.
for the rest of this year, we're just going to proceed as we are. If you, if somebody else wanted to come in because somebody else dropped off, then they come before us as they always have. And for next year, we will, no.
But you're not going to grant any more hawkers and peddlers because you, that is, you don't want to make two wrongs and a right. You've granted twenty-five, you have the twenty-five or twenty-three. But you're not granting any hawkers, peddlers again, under, for a farmer's market because it's not the appropriate use of that statutory license.
That's exactly my point about these points.
Mr. Harris?
So to, to their point, if two or three vendors drop out and someone makes homemade donuts, that's Jess and, and Jalen, if they, you know...
If we say you got twenty-five slots or Mark says you can have thirty, they're dealing with it now. You've given them approval of the use of the land. You've told them they can use the land and operate their market as they do. But again, a year from now, before you approve use of the land, as I say in the memo, you want to see some overriding guiding principles for their operation.
I agree with that.
The one thing you're going to want to do is ensure that people have some form of insurance for liability. Because liability's not on the town. It's going to be on the farmer's market, it's going to be on each and every vendor throughout, how you manage it. So that's going to be an important component.
Would it make sense, would it make sense to have your group, at least formalize a group and come up with a group name and come up with a manager and give us that information? You know, within our next meeting's joint, June seventh? And we'll try and start moving in that direction so that if there's a problem, we know who to go contact?
Actually, to that point, Mr. Chairman, how much should, how much should we be communicating that to you from this point or if we, we lay the ground rules? What do you want to know?
I think at this point, um, we want you to formalize a group and give us some names of some people. We want you to get insurance from the people that are currently there and we don't want you to add anyone else. Is that...
That's a good setup.
Sound a good start?
Yep.
Maybe you could suggest, if, if I may, Mr. Chair, to say, um, you know, sometime in July, mid-July, late-July, just to have a informal meeting, how things going, just to check in, that's all.
So, and also if we get a, if we get the, a safety officer to give us the report and see that there's
Excuse me.
fifty slots instead of the current twenty, then maybe we discuss it up here, although that probably is unlikely. And if you could, like I said, if you could get the town administrator that, just that piece of paper so that there is some sort of formalized, um, you know, communication point between the two, that'd be probably a good step. Any other?
No, and I just, I think I agree with Ann and even though, you know, the memo sort of, sort of lays out some strict things. I mean, this is a happy problem. When you were here two years ago, you just had sort of a nub of an idea. And now you have too many vendors. So, you know, it really is a good thing. We just want to make sure it's a little more, you know,
Right.
following what the rest of the world's doing relative to their markets.
Also, with, with all due respect to any customers of vendors that we're bringing in and products that we're bringing in, we have been very, very sensitive to the North Situate merchants as well as the harbor merchants in handpicking, really handpicking assortment of personalities and product that will make a cohesive poll and that will not overlap but will enhance. I mean, Jess and Bridget have just put so much time and energy into this.
Okay, so we don't need a motion? Any, any other discussion?
Can I just ask one more?
Yep, and if you can just, I know I've been remiss, if you can just say your name and where you live.
Jessica Lane.
Thank you, Jessica.
About the insurance, I've looked into insurance. I spoke to Mark, said he makes a lot of insurance for the town. I kind of want to look into that more, but I'm hoping to waiver, offer a waiver to some of the people and I, I want to know, just like crushed cut flowers and Jack's crayons and so, is that something that we will be able to do?
I think, I think...
And we're not in a position about that discussion. We need guidelines, we need policies, we need a governing board.
So for this year, it's not an issue. For next year, it may be mandated that they have it, but we'll, we'll discuss that in the future. Any other? Great, no motion? So we'll move forward to number nine, which is the town administrator's report?
Town administrator has no report.
Blank page?
It's missing.
I think it says, go Bruins. Number ten, other business. Mr. Harris, any?
Not tonight, Tony.
Mr. Norton?
Nothing, thank you.
Danny?
Nothing.
Mr. Murray?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind the board, and just in case they didn't get an email, there is a change in the time, but Congressman Keating is coming to town tomorrow. And, uh, because he's going to be getting a brief from Jeff Rosen and other members of the Ocean Campus Board at the Maritime Center, because he's expressed an interest in this project. And he'll be here tomorrow, latest estimate was one o'clock. So I'll be there, everybody else is welcome as well.
Right, thank you. Just a, a couple of quick things on a sporting note. Situate Little League is having their fundraiser on, uh, June sixth coming up. Anyone interested, uh, contact someone on the board or someone in Little League and we'll get your tickets. Bill Lee is showing up and he is going to sign baseballs and tell stories and all that sort of stuff.
Space man.
Space man, yep. And that kind of coincides to the Situate High School basketball, baseball team, which is having a great start. I think they're nine and one or nine and two and really having a great year.[1796.61] I think they're nine and one or nine and two, and really having a great year. They play right behind us, so go there in an afternoon, and you can watch a game.